Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Grandville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Norco?
Present.
Marya?
Present.
Norco?
Here.
Steenstra?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Vanderwaal?
Here.
And Mirmas?
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, councilmember Steenstra will be giving that. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for invocation. You can follow that by the board of presidents.
That's great. Almighty God, we give you thanks for bringing us here tonight. We give you thanks for the start of a new year and in the hope of what lies ahead of us. And we ask your blessing on our meeting tonight. We thank you for our city, for our employees, our leaders. Thank you for the people who've come out tonight to sit in on the business of council and the agenda that we have. So thank you for your goodness to us and the blessings that we're going to experience into 2025. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. Marcy Rayden. Well, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
So support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, in the opposition, please say no. We have the minutes from our last regular meeting, which was almost a month ago, December 16. You had a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So support.
Motion in support. Any additions, corrections? You think anybody wants to come up?
Just one minor thing.
Yeah.
I'm page two there. I had asked to be refused from a discussion about liability property pool.
Okay.
It's because I'm on the board directors for the liability property pool, not just because of the M L Board of Trustees. I'm on that as well, but specifically to the liability property pool.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other comments? So with that, we have a motion in support. With that clarification, all those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from last week's special city council meeting, strategic planning, which was at the library commons room. Had a chance to take a look at those. I was not there, so thank you for excusing me. So a motion to approve those minutes.
So support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. Now for the presentation of the bills. You can tell it's been a month since we had our last bill through. Big amount tonight.
It is, yes.
Nine or three roughly.
Yep, the amount is over 1.3 million. As you mentioned, we have not had a meeting since the middle of December, which is a big part of the reason. That's a relatively large number. I do have a few bills I'll point out to you all and happy to take any questions. Going to start by pointing out a vendor, C D W Government, an invoice in the amount of $43,424.58. This is our 2025 software licenses, Microsoft 365, our email, Microsoft Word, and all of those fun things that we get to use every day. So it's a pretty large annual payment that we make there. We have an invoice in the amount of $13,319 to Fast Denial Company. This is the portable foldable gantry that was approved for the Clean Water Plant on November 25th. We have a large progress payment for the Clean Water Plant Blower Project in the amount of $404,221 to Franklin Holwerda Company. We have Great Lakes Chloride Inc. an invoice in the amount of just over $7,000. That is excitingly road salt, which I would think we'll be using plenty of tonight. We have an invoice in the amount of $35,330 to Hillard Electric Inc. This is an electrician contractor that we work with, progress payment associated with the lightning strike repairs that are ongoing and will ultimately get reimbursed by our insurance company. We have a few different vendors for clean water plant chemicals. So one for N E O, Neo Solutions Inc., $32,000. Kemeral Water Solutions Inc., $43,580. Those are various clean water plant chemicals that we use. We do have the M M L Liability and Property Pool, premium payment in the amount of $185,526. That was approved on December 16th. And let's see, any others that may be of interest to you all? We do have the Corbett Notch, which is not a vendor we see all the time. This is actually a DDA facade grant reimbursement in the amount of $16,579. And then lastly, I also want to point out Stryker Sales, which is the police department A E Bs that the city council approved out of our, it was the opioid settlement funds on October 28th. So some kind of interesting ones in there that we don't see all the time. Also, a lot of the kind of normal ones that we do see, but I'm happy to discuss any or anything more detail or answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Griffin about any of the bills tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve their bills tonight in the amount of $1343,313.88? So motion in support and support. Any other questions or comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Marya?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Well, tonight, we're going to have a public hearing in a little bit about the Park and Recreation Master Plan. But before we do that, let's just open it up to general public comment. Anybody here who'd like to address the council, just come on up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and tell us what you think about it. And anybody last? Yes, sir.
Good evening, board. Brent Talan, 4452 41st Street. Currently on the park board, just here to thank the city for everything they've done for the parks and the board and support over the years. The last couple of years, we've been able to do a lot of great projects, enhance the city that way. Looking to show our support for the board, our park board voted on the current plan in front of you tonight, the updated version, looking to get the city council's approval tonight on that plan. I think this is a great plan, very comprehensive, helping to move the city forward in a great direction over the next five years on this. And we've had a lot of great input building this plan and making sure we can get this supported and be able to still eligible for D N R funding and not miss any of the timelines there. Again, this is just a working document over the next five years, kind of directional. Helps gives us clarity on where some priority projects are to bring before you guys. And again, we couldn't have done a lot of the projects without the D P W support as well and their commitment to taking care of our parks. But that's kind of where our board felt we should come before you guys tonight to throw our support behind the plan that's there. Thank you.
Appreciate your service time, the board, too.
Thanks.
So Brent's not just a board member on the Park and Rec Board, he's also a new chair of the board.
Current chair is over January, right? Taken over him.
So you probably see him out here again.
Yeah. Over time, probably just not the next two months.
Anybody else like to address the council?
Good evening. I have copies.
Okay, these are copies.
Is this about the parks plan?
It is, and I could, I'm happy to save my comments officially part of the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'm sorry, just my suggestion would be if the comments are about the parks plan, you're better off doing it in the public hearing just so it can get on the formal record associated with the consideration.
Whatever makes the most sense.
You're welcome to do it here in public comment, but just I'm assuming most people who are here this evening are here to speak about the parks plan, that probably be the best time to do that.
Again, whatever makes the most sense. I just, I didn't want to stay silent because I was just a little Scottish of a concern that there wasn't public comment during the hearing, but that's the nature of it.
Oh, yeah, there will be.
Okay. All right. I'll return to my seat.
Certainly, I'm pronouncing. Thanks, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, then we will go to the public hearing. We'll open up that public hearing. And Chris, any comments you'd like to make, or I know we've got Chris with us.
Sure. Yeah, I just, I'll start off just by thanking both Chris, Paige, and their team at McKenna, as well as all the work that Assistant City Manager Matt Buck's put into getting us to this point. I know that they have an overview presentation for you all, so if you all would like to formally open the public hearing, my suggestion would be let's let Paige and McKenna start. They'll go through their overview of the plan. We can then open it up to the public for comments as part of the public hearing. Once we've concluded all of those, the council can discuss. We're happy to answer any questions, and we can get it to consideration at that point.
So motion to open the public hearing on the Park and Rec Master Plan? Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no.
Awesome, thank you. Paige, you guys want to come on up?
I don't know why it's not going on.
Somebody behind you that can help.
Where is it, Paige?
We don't get a bill from the city.
No, that's all covered.
You should talk to R F T because as the planning mission, my computer doesn't work on this thing.
Just somebody can give it to you.
I'm afraid of Michael's something with Wi-Fi down. Or is he having a PC? You could email her, get it over to Marcy real quick, and she could pull it up.
Yeah, just have to get it.
Is the Wi-Fi working?
Oh, yeah, is the guest Wi-Fi working?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, everybody.
Because I always fear my child appears.
I also just don't want to join your wife. They do, but I don't think that would.
Paige, you just want to try to put it on the splash screen and see if we can move it over.
While we're waiting with council's consent, we could go down to the consent agenda.
Okay. So approval of the consent agenda tonight would be in the best interest of the city because there are a couple purchases on there. Clean Water Plant at 2025 GMC Acadia and also a generator at the water plant. In addition, we have some reports, a code enforcement report from 2024, P C I's report from 2024, also the December reports for the E N S and Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Treasury Office. Also, we have the minutes from the Tree Board, November 5 meeting and January 8 meeting. We also have an appointment that would be the County Waste and Energy Advisory Committee, and that's ready, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you for being willing to continue serving there. We also have a number of resolutions that we do every year, establishing the Grand Board of Review minutes or meeting dates for 2025, and also the establishing the 2025 Poverty Exemption Guidelines, and those are given to us and routinely adopted, as well as agreements to collect taxes on behalf of Grand Rapids Community College, Grandville Public Schools, Kent Intermediate School District, Wyoming Public Schools, or that portion of the city, and then, as I said, the two miscellaneous purchase orders. So a lot on there, but many of them are very routine things. Is there a motion to approve that consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So support.
Anything anybody wants to talk about in particular? I enjoyed the police reports and fire, as always, very interesting, very busy departments. Oh, I noticed two days before Christmas, the largest number of vehicles traveling through the retail corridor of over 50,000 vehicles, so busy. All right, so we've got a motion in support. Any other comments, questions? Josh?
I also enjoyed the police report. I thought it was very positive to hear that our summer cadet, Master Fobus, was coming back and working in support as a police recruit, so that's great. We're very proud of him.
I get that. Positive, so congratulations.
A question. Chief, what is a Carter kit? You got tons of them.
Yeah, we got those thanks to Jersey Mike's fundraiser reports. It is a kit that has a bunch of different tools or toys depending on how you want to look at it, that helps us interact with persons on the autism spectrum. It was designed by a detective over on the east side of the state, was a son that's on the spectrum and frequently wandered off, and it is now a nationwide program. So our officers are going to be going through the training on that program hopefully this month, and we'll get those on my first.
Other comments, questions?
How well did we do the Jersey Mike's fundraiser right now? We passed out cards and I, we have no idea who used them and went there, but what did that add up to be?
It was just under $500.
$500?
Yeah. If we would have got the card sooner, I think we would have done better, but we just greatly appreciate the support that we get from our business community, so.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, you know, this code enforcement report, too, I'd like to. It's a nice pie graph that we can all understand pretty simply here, but it's interesting, right? So how much time we've spent talking about issues that are on here versus the number of complaints that we've had for, I think is just an interesting correlation or not a correlation for that matter. So I appreciate both his work for sure, and I know he's probably either excited or not excited to get back to work depending on the weather, but I do appreciate this, and this is an important part of our public safety, so thanks to both.
Other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
Marya?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes.
Looks like you're up and running now.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Colleagues for the technical issues.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Paige, just Griffin said, and this is my colleague, Chris. Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. Really excited to have gotten to work on this plan and to hopefully get to adopt it tonight. So I'm just going to run through real quick what the Parks Plan is for, and then I'll run through an overview of the plan. So it's basically a five-year plan. The biggest thing is to be eligible for grant funding, but it's also just helpful in creating a roadmap, a guide to what you guys want to do with your parks in the city. So this is basically what the table contents looks like, but what's in it is the general demographics of the city to give a background on what is needed in terms of parks and recreation, followed by grant history. There are accessibility and walkability assessments, the administrative structure and organization of your city, budgets, both current and proposed, parks inventory analysis, and then lastly, the goals and objectives and action plan, which is what we'll get into next. So we have five major goals, each with different objectives within them. So the first goal is to provide diverse and exciting recreational opportunities for all residents, and the objectives within those are to upgrade park amenities in as many parks as possible by 2030, as laid out in the action plan, to invest in modern equipment that is fun, safe, equitable, and sustainable, to provide a wide variety of activities, facilities, and amenities, to ensure that newly popular facilities such as disc golf and pickleball courts are provided to the public, to identify and implement opportunities for pollinator gardens and other areas of flowering landscaping, and also to, within that, to recruit volunteers to create a garden club to maintain the flowers. Next one is to consider a location in or around Grandville for a dog park, and then the last one under this goal is to support community engagement. So then we've got goal number two, which is to ensure that all residents have access to green space and park amenities in their neighborhoods. And the objectives within this are to ensure all parks have amenities that add value to the surrounding community in proportion to the size of the park and the needs of the community, next to acquire land along Buck Creek, as described in the Greenway Vision that we have in the plan, to create continuous natural and recreational space running through the core of the city, next to ensure parks have adequate and appropriate space nearby for parking vehicles where deemed necessary and appropriate, provide bicycle parking at parks where deemed necessary and appropriate. The next one is to work with other city departments to ensure sidewalks are constructed to reach all of the parks, and to also work with both the city and the county partners to build out the planned non-rotaryized pathway network. The next one is to work with other city departments to ensure all infrastructure surrounding the parks is working in working order and supports the needs of park users. And then the last one within this goal is to seek out opportunities for placemaking, public art, pocket parks, and small gathering areas within the downtown area. Next, we have goal number three, which is to design all parks to be welcoming, accessible, and fun for all potential users. And the objectives within this are to involve the community and the general public in parks improvement decisions, to understand the needs of the neighborhood when planning parks improvements, to understand the history of the parks and their history when planning parks improvements, to understand the potential users of a park when designing park improvements, to understand the potential for vandalism and other negative influences when planning park improvements, to maintain and update the signage that identifies city parks, to promote events and activities within the parks, and then lastly, to promote opportunities for residents to invest in the parks themselves, such as the Community Garden Initiative, neighborhood cleanups, and community art projects. So goal number four is to design parks using the best practices for sustainability and resiliency, and the objectives we have within this are to reduce impervious surfaces in parks where possible, to preserve wetlands and protect floodplains, to remove invasive species, as well as improve wildlife habitats, to preserve the trees and replace any removed trees on a two-to-one basis, to use native species for landscaping where possible, to utilize recycled materials and facilities and equipment, and to provide and maintain trash recycling receptacles at the parks. Goal number five is to continue to ensure that Grandville's parks are a source of community pride, and the objectives within this are to maintain all parks to a high level of quality, to provide high-quality fun and exciting equipments and amenities at the parks, to work with the community to make the park spaces the center of the community life, to invest in public art and other placemaking activities within the parks, to highlight the important role that parks play in providing positive stimulation and exercise for young people and their families, to promote city parks to the regional community, to encourage residents to take pride in their neighborhood parks and adopt them as their own, and to increase the maintenance budget to ensure that amenities can remain in good condition. So next, we have the action plan, which just lays out more in order what exactly or specifically will be done. So we organized that by park. So starting with Wedgwood Park, we have senior lot improvements. Within Heritage Park, we have to relocate and add the swings, as well as to implement street parking signage along 42nd Street and Cherokee Avenue. At Calvin Crest Park, we have to review and redesign the tennis courts, as well as implement higher fencing. At Lee Street Park, we have to install canopies, to install new playground equipment with rubber flooring, as well as new beaching benches and seating areas. At Miller East Park, we have to remove invasive species, as well as implement rain gardens, pollinator gardens, and native plantings, as well as to implement an ice skating rink. Continuing on with the action plan, we have Peck Street Park, and at that park, we also have implementing canopies, either fabric or trees. There's the Community Garden Partnership, and then to install new playground equipment, also with rubber flooring. At the Little League Baseball Complex, we have the need for street parking signage, as well as annual assessments with the Little League. And then Buck Creek Trail, we've got a lot of different goals. So those are to maintain and update the wayfinding signage, to implement a crosswalk on Prairie Street, as well as between Broadway and Chicago Avenue, to implement a primitive path on the south side of Buck Creek, to remove invasive species, as well as implement native species, to remove roots that are undermining the trail and repave the trail as needed, to redirect composite, and to acquire conservation easements along Buck Creek in order to continue to construct the Buck Creek Greenway. And then lastly, with our action plan, we have the Grand River Waterfront, and the goals within that are to promote, to promote and educate people on the river waterfront, to improve the access plan, to replace the old dock, and then to work with the Kent County Parks on improvements to the trail system, including the Kent Trail System, Indian Mounds Trail, and the Grand River Greenway. Then we have a few miscellaneous areas, such as the land adjacent to the senior center, and they would like a gazebo, a picnic area, and senior maintained gardens. The land south of the cemetery, the goals within that are to construct unpaved trails to the woods for various activities, to improve the wildlife habitat along Buck Creek, as well as the fish habitat, to refurbish and to refurbish the pedestrian bridge. For the land across from South Elementary School, we just have to upgrade the existing facilities, and then a few miscellaneous items just throughout the city would be to improve the tree canopy, to continue to remove invasive species and improve the wildlife habitat, to install curb cut rain gardens, and to support community engagement. And then the next steps would just be to have the public hearing, the vote, and then we would take any revisions and suggestions, implement them, and then submit it to M D N R before February 1st.
Any questions?
So we're going to answer questions from council, as well as in terms of the public hearing. Just reiterate what Paige said, we can make revisions to this document even as part of an affirmative vote, right? So that there are changes to be made. So, but that said, we do a February 1st deadline to M D N R. If we don't hit that, then you guys lose eligibility for grants for the next year. So that's why you're on the 13th, to try to get it done in advance of that.
That sounds like a pretty hard deadline.
Yeah, if you submit February 17th. Yeah, if you submit February 2nd, you're not eligible until February 1st or 2026. So...
Okay, so I read through the plan, and then Matt sent an updated plan today, which I didn't get a chance to read through. But looking at the presentation, that disc golf is out of the plan at Millrace Park?
At Millrace, yes.
Okay.
There's still a general goal to find a location for something like that, but not amenities, if I'm correct.
Yes, that was my understanding.
Okay, thank you. And then was anything talked about about the geese poop at Heritage Park? That's not in the plan at all, is it?
No, but I did just make an addition recently. Not within the action plan, but just a general goal to come up with a plan for addressing that issue.
Okay, good. And then my last question is, across from South Elementary, how did you word that just now? Upgrade?
Existing.
Existing facilities? That means it's gonna stay one single tennis court?
Where did that come down?
That was the direction of the Park and Rec Board. In fact, there was... The neighbors around there enjoyed it being a tennis court instead of a pickleball court.
Okay.
Well, in reality, it could get resurfaced and restriktable at some point. But a year or so ago, everybody had talked about Wedgwood Park and what we were doing with the horseshoe pits and tennis courts and the pickleball courts over there. At that time, there was some conversation about possibly moving horseshoe pits over there instead. We got feedback from the neighbors that they want that. They'd like to maintain it as some kind of bracket court. It's a tennis court now, but it is more... We have to...
As a broad point about this document, we want to make sure this is a framework that the Parks Board can work within over the next five years. So in some cases, the language is intentionally a little vague. Because that gives them the flexibility to take that neighbor input into account and maybe get restrikted, so it can be pickleball and tennis. Or maybe we do find a way to get horseshoe, but that's still an upgrade to the existing facilities, right? And also, same idea with M D N R. When we submit to them, we have to say, yes, this is in our plan. Being able to have a number of things that could all fit under one heading is effective. Now, it has to be a useful document, because we can't make everything vague. But there's a reason, in some cases, why there's a lack of specificity. It's intentional to allow that flexibility within the broad vision.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, we're all against that deadline with the M D N R. Can you share with us any concrete numbers that we're looking for as far as grants go? Second part of the question is, what do you think our chances are? The third part of the question is, when will we hear back from them?
Same question. So Parks Board, are they looking this cycle? Irrelevant question.
I can speak to that. Thank you, J R, for the question. Where we stand now, we don't not have plans to submit for a grant. Now we have till April 30th to apply for a grant if we wish. Right now, our focus is the improvements to Millrace Park. That's identified in this last Park and Rec Plan. We received a Michigan National Resource Trust Fund grant, the type of grant we'd be going after with this document. Two and a half billion, about quarter million dollars for that improvement. That project has been scaled down over the last couple of years just due to the cost projections. And again, keeping it in line with the vision of the community of that being a pass apart, the improvements being located in the area where the barns were located. Our focus is on getting that project done. Charlie, were Jeff and I bidding that this spring?
Yes, we got the approval from the D N R on the permits. We're gonna wait for an Eagle permit and hopefully add it up and bid for the next 30 days.
So that's our primary focus going into '25, is that project?
So we're not applying for any grants that are due October 1st?
Correct.
Yeah, and then the grants would be as Matt said, April 30th. So it's basically the cycle is submitted and then... So yes, in fairness, yeah. If you lose eligibility, it doesn't then harm your ability to apply for a grant in 2026, provided you are eligible that year, right? You probably got some idea of the rest of your question from what Matt just said. We are looking at grants in the order of several hundred thousand dollars. You do have to match, so that's good. There's a limit factor there. And as far as your chances, you were obviously successful with Millrace, though it took two tries. And so what you're proposing to do and whether it fits within what M D N R has as their priorities in a given year is relevant. And then you've got some structural factors. You know, you are a mid to high-income community. That won't hurt you, right? But there's also a legacy built out relatively urban community that will help you in some ways. You have regional trails running through your community that will help you. So there's push-pull. And like, yeah, as Matt said, the city has been successful in the previous five-year cycle. I get it, you're right.
Thanks.
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, even if there's not something specifically that we would be going for a D N R grant with, there may be other local grants. We're always kind of keeping an eye out for things that might be coming up there. One of the things that we've been having a lot of conversation on the last few months is about improving the string quality for the habitat for fish. Specifically, that section behind the cemetery. How that wouldn't necessarily be a D N R grant, but that might be some local grant funds or even working with Shrooms, Shroom Limited to have a discussion about that. You know, having a plan that includes some of these things could possibly give us more, if we were to apply for some kind of community foundation grant or some other kind of grant in the area. Having something in writing in a plan that says this is the direction we want to go or something that we want to work on as a project. I would assume that they would be looking for those types of things too, to show that they're doing some diligence to making plans for that event, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's general rule for the Parks Board and your partners and staff, and D P W maintaining everything, your current plan's five years old. And having a plan that is updated in today's reality is valuable in itself.
There are some things in here from the last plan that we carried forward. There are other things that are new or updated. You know, things that we can check off the list that aren't in the current plan and take care of. Five years is kind of a long time to have something sort of stay the same without going back and making those changes, so...
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. So the public hearing is open. So anybody like to make public comment on this? Please just come up to the podium, give us your name, address. Try to keep your comments succinct if possible, and tell us what you're thinking about. Any thoughts on this?
Take two. Well, good evening. My name is Mitch Leachman. I live at 3963 Goshwood Drive. I do want my comments to be fully reflected in the record. And having provided a paper copy, I trust that will be very easy to do so. Because given the presentation and the conversation, I'm going to not read those comments, as I appreciate that there have been some changes to the plan since I reviewed it. Although, to be fair, I'm looking at a short PowerPoint presentation, and I'm not looking at the document. And so things like the disc golf course, which I appreciate if it's not going to be installed in Millrace Park, but it was called out as something that the city is interested in doing or the Parks Board is interested in doing. So there's a few things that I still want to talk about, if that makes sense. And we'll start with disc golf, because I don't really know what the fascination is with that, since the city, and we're a small city and we're a small Parks Department, we already have disc golf at Heritage Park. I don't know why we would feel the need to put another course somewhere else in the city. More specifically, so that's an opinion. More specifically, the survey did include the plan. The plan development did include a public input survey, an online survey, a few weeks of an online survey only. That survey did not have any questions, did not have any screening for residency. Fifty-four percent of the respondents are listed as supporting disc golf, but not having asked whether the respondents were Granville residents. I just urge you all to recognize that that is a possibility than of having seemingly support for an amenity that in fact is really not driven by Granville residents. Well, this is not just something I come up with, because in fact, there are user groups, right? There's user groups for disc golf, there's user groups for biking, and so on. And specifically, the disc golf has a user group called the Grand Rapids Disc Golfers United. They're relevant, because they have an active Facebook group. And they actually encourage their followers to respond to Parks and Recreation surveys. I found evidence of this several times over the last few years. I did not specifically find a post that referenced the Granville survey. But they did specifically shout out the Wyoming Parks and Rec Survey last year and specifically urged their followers to, and I don't remember the exact words, since again, I'm not reading my exact comments, but it was something very specific about, oh, it was, let's get disc golf improvements added to their plans. So in short, if staff, Parks Board, if leadership, if you all are convinced that we need a second disc golf course, well, by all means, leave it in the plan in some way and look for an opportunity to add it. I think that's unfortunate, in part, like I said, because we do not even know the level of support for it. So same thought process applies to new unpaved trails in the land south of the cemetery for biking. I don't have anything against biking. I used to own a bike. Don't have one right now. But that is a very small parcel. It is currently a natural area. And what I have seen drafted within the city, representative idea of bike trails, they're pretty intensive. And if you all work with the West Michigan Mountain Bike Alliance, I've seen their work, including in East Grand Rapids. And you would end up with a very intensive network in a seventeen-acre space. It would fundamentally alter the character of that space, and it would be a playground for bikers. Seventy-six percent of survey respondents expressed support for this particular amenity. But again, the Mountain Bike Alliance also uses their Facebook group to encourage their followers to go and submit input to Parks and Rec surveys. They've done it a few times in the last few years. Again, I didn't find specific evidence that they've done this for Granville. But so my last point on that is, if, again, regardless of surveys, if everyone is comfortable going forward with such bike trails, I just urge thoughtful limitations on those trails. And those thoughtful limitations are included in the seven pages of comments that are provided to city staff. I'm not going to elucidate any of those. And I think they're reasonable limitations that still allow the installation of the trails. I think my last and final comment, while I have your attention, is a little bit more general, although also specific about the plan. Again, maybe the current version of the plan has been edited to account for this. But the action plan chapter and the section on Millrace Park very specifically referred to as undeveloped as a park. Those are the words in the plan. Given the various paved trails that run through Millrace Park, the overlook, the benches, the curb cuts and Carlton Park Drive, I struggle to understand, all the mowed turf grass, I struggle to understand how it's undeveloped as a park. I do not understand why it would have an M D N R accessibility score of one, which was also in the draft plan that I looked at, which is essentially the lowest you can get on that scale. For reference, Buck Creek Trail and the Grand River Path gets a three. And I don't see any difference in their build-out. But my point for all that is not only it seems like there were some issues in the drafting of that section, but I just hope that everyone in city leadership appreciates that Millrace, the riverfront, these naturalized spaces that are not filled with infrastructure and facilities, that they're really important and they're functional park spaces. And they satisfy most especially the passive recreation user community across Granville, of which there are many of us. They're not just bird watchers. So again, back to sort of where we start in my comments. I appreciate what I saw in the presentation. Having spent a lot of time with this plan, I was able to follow Paige's comments in the slides and go, okay, that's different. That wasn't there before, action plan and so on. So I sincerely appreciate that there's been work done in the last week or so, perhaps in direct response to the seven pages I submitted. I just, again, share some of those other thoughts and hope that's helpful. Thank you all for your time, attention, and service, staff, Parks Board. I do love Granville, and I'm really happy we moved here two years ago. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. So we'll make sure that the document that you gave tonight is in the record. And also the previous memo, the seven pages, would you want that?
If that's, again, I don't know if that's relevant, since again, that was comments to the draft plan.
Okay, sure. Good. Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak? Ben, welcome.
Thank you. I don't often come up here and speak. I've saved all my time from the last meetings. So, and we're gonna go to it. My name is Ben Wykamp. I live 4276 Forty Second Street. And I've had the privilege of serving on the Parks and Rec Board since 1975. That's fifty years, in case you're wondering. Does that mean anything, only that I'm old? But this is also the ninth or tenth master plan that I've had some involvement with. They have evolved from the days of Virgil Leatherman doing them by himself, the city staff. I know Matt Luss has some involvement in doing them. We've had professionals do it. Five years ago, decided to go a different way. Interviewed several outfits to put together our master plan. Came up with McKenna, which in my opinion was a great choice. They put together perhaps the best plan we've ever had. The most comprehensive, with the most community input that we've ever had in a plan. This revision does the same thing. There's a whole lot of stuff in the plan. Mitch was just talking, I've got to talk about Millrace Park and the land south of the cemetery. What's gonna happen there is not etched in stone. Is there gonna be mountain bike trails? Maybe it works, maybe it doesn't. With the addition of the seven acres and the bridge, that changed things. Millrace Park, is there gonna be a frisbee golf course in there? Probably not. It probably doesn't fit. That's one of those things that you put into a park after everything else that you need is in there. If they fit, you put it in. I'm in favor of them. But it probably won't fit in Millrace. So in my way of thinking, this is a great plan. You've got my permission to go ahead and approve it.
Appreciate the half a century of work.
Yeah, it's been five.
Thank you. Anybody else? Like to address the council? Now's your chance. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Micah Davis. I live at 4292 Gilmar Street. My wife and I moved here in '22. We live right next to the Little League baseball fields. And we've had a lot of problems with those, with people that attend the games, staff, whatnot. So I just wanted to address, I guess, what's going on with the signage. I forget the exact wording, but I guess we're gonna be updating street signage to... I forget the exact wording, but I guess we're gonna be updating street signage to, I don't know, clarify parking. I don't know how any type of signage would help, 'cause I know our street and other neighboring streets have had a lot of problems with people parking in front of our driveways. There's too many cars for, or there's, there's too many games, too many cars for the amount of parking available. I just don't see how updated signage is gonna do anything, so I was curious as to what the reasoning or thought process was behind that, or if there was any other actions after that. 'Cause, yeah, we've had plenty of problems, people parking in front of our driveways, people harassing us whenever we ask the police to come and, you know, escort them or move their cars or whatever. Like, it's gotten pretty bad. I have two daughters and, like, it's really nerve-wracking when they wanna go out and play outside when there's games going on, 'cause people are constantly going through our yards. There used to be a pass-through for the church parking lot through my yard. And I recently closed that off with a privacy fence, 'cause we just had so many problems, people going through our yard harassing us, going up and down a driveway. So, yeah, I guess all that to say, I prefer to see more attention towards the Little League fields. I think there is a capacity problem. There's too many fields, not enough parking, and so, yeah, I guess that's it.
Appreciate the comments, Micah. Drop. What's your address again, Micah?
Four-two-nine-two Billmar Street Southwest.
Thank you. Brittany, welcome.
Hello. I'm Brittany Koolay. I live at forty-two ninety-eight Billmar Street. As my neighbor Micah, we get all sorts of horrible parking. People park in my driveway, from my driveway, mailbox, fire hydrants. People have been changing in our front yard, stripping down to braund underwear, trash everywhere. The fields just really aren't maintained anymore like they used to be. We don't really do the spring cleanup anymore, but we'll go out ourselves and clean up trash, glass, all that kind of stuff in the off-time, just as a family, 'cause we wanna see our park that we use quite often. Our son, we just pulled him from it because it no longer serves his age. But we moved there for the fields and it's hard to see it just go absolutely awful over there. We've had to call the police numerous times for harassment and there's almost fiscal altercation with a resident and somebody's mom or grandma or something, and just all the cussing and swearing and people double parking in the street. I would like to see, there's big open space behind, next to the T-ball field, that could provide some parking with proper fencing along the side of forty-two ninety-eight Billmar to block them from being able to go into their yard or even taking out that big field with, that does not have the grass infield. It's barely used. If it is, it's for tournaments. I don't know how much Little League makes off of those, but the field's used maybe five times a year. I think that would be a great parking lot to enter off of Aaron, 'cause I know Aaron, Blackfoot, all of them all had a lot of issues as well with parking and it's made a lot of people move and that's pretty sad. We're the oldest ones in our neighborhood, across the street on that road. We've been there for sixteen years, so it'd be nice to get some help from the city with us, 'cause it's very frustrating to have to park at the end of the driveway, so let people stop parking in their own driveway. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Thanks, Brittany. Anybody else? Welcome.
How's it going?
Good.
My name's Aaron Offringa. I'm at thirty-seven twenty-four thirtieth Street. I just wanted to encourage the council or the city or the Parks Board to, if they are going to consider a mountain bike trail at Mill Race Park, that they team up with the West Michigan Mountain Biking Association, one, so that they can maintain the trail. Two, I would also encourage the city to maybe discuss with other municipalities such as, I believe it's Wyoming, or maybe it's Grand Rapids, for the Underground Trail, which is near Grand Rapids Christian, and then also the Kenosha Trail. Those trails are both around one to two miles long. They're not huge destinations, they're more used by local residents in the area. Being a cyclist myself, I rarely drive to those ones to go participate. That's generally like a trail in Rockford would be more appealing. And so, if the city is gonna go down the road of having a one to two mile trail, one, I would encourage also to take into account, you know, what sort of skill level that the trail would attract. You know, a flat trail with no burns and not much cutting of the forest isn't gonna attract a whole lot of hardcore mountain bikers. And maybe that's not what the city wants. If it's just a leisurely nature trail, that makes sense. So, without proper maintenance, the trails can go bad very quickly. The Underground Trail was a very good location for a lot of homeless, a lot of not-so-good activity. The West Michigan Mountain Biking Association has stepped up and improved that trail and it is now in much better shape. This probably was like two years ago, so just wanted to encourage the council to make sure that if they are going that route, do their due diligence and talk to people who would use it. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thanks, Aaron. Anybody else with any other comments? Last chance. Okay, is there a motion?
Can I just have a question there? So, this issue with the Little League, we've heard all this for, I'm a third city manager where we've heard about this issue, Griffin, so I know it's newer to you, but I did wonder if maybe you and kind of both can provide a little bit more information on, you know, how does this vision help with that issue and then what are some ongoing conversations with the city manager's office and where are we maybe at with that Little League issue? Because it has, you know, continued to be an issue and listening to them speak tonight, I would not appreciate entering that and many of them have done it for a long time, so just wondering where we're at.
Sure. Can I defer first to you guys to speak specifically about the plan? I can give you some other updates about some conversations. Matt or Chris, do you guys know specifically what these were referring to?
Yeah, Matt, maybe try to first if you want some, I may have full thoughts.
You know, what the plan says is, as was mentioned, is improve parking signage. Now, that may help or may not help. Parking's a founding issue out there for a very long time. We would know that. It's a city facility run essentially, we maintain it, it's run by a Little League. So, it's a long history there. Certainly, we recognize there needs to be improvements. As a city, what can we do certain signage? We look at things like reducing the number of fields, those that could impact the Little League. I know they have visions for possibly going somewhere else in the future, whether that's realistic or not, it's not recognized in our plan at all. That may be the ultimate solution, is if there's a green field out somewhere or there's plenty of parking from outside of an neighborhood, that may be a good plan, but it's not recognized in this plan. This plan just recognizes parking signage. Listening to the neighbors, I wouldn't wanna live next to something like that. So, if you want us to address that in this plan, we can take a deeper dive, you know, ranging from mentioning of removing one of the fields that's rarely used and putting parking in there to see if that helps. Historically, we did tear it on a house on Canal and added parking there when I first started the city, so it's been about twenty years now. So, it is an issue, if we're gonna address it, the plan is the right tool to do that. But what exactly is the desire of the council?
So, to jump into that a little bit more, Justin, I mean, I'll tell you first, I'm glad to see there is at least some acknowledgement that we know there are some issues out there. As you mentioned, this is not a new issue, it was one that I became aware of very early on in my tenure. I've had the chance to talk with Micah before, I had the chance to go out with some representatives from Grandville Little League and walk around the property. So, I know in the fall, I was trying to do as much kind of listening and learning as I can, there is no magic answer. I do know something I've talked to a few people about is trying to have a meeting and facilitate a conversation with everyone involved to see if we can try to work through this. The reason I say that is anything involving building additional parking, anything involving removing fields, you know, whether or not that's the direction we wanna go, whether or not that's a good idea, candidly, that's not happening fast. And we have real impacts impacting real people every time there's a season. So, I know I've spoken with people, a few of the neighbors and people from the Little League who all seem to wanna try to find a way to make this work and yet candidly seem to be pretty far apart on what that looks like. So, you know, my thoughts and, again, I think the best we're gonna be able to do right now is in the upcoming months prior to the spring season starting off is trying to mediate some kind of conversation there. Again, there's efforts that we can take in regard to engaging the police department in terms of parking enforcement. There's other strategies I know a few of us have tried to brainstorm about, you know, involving engaging existing parking that's not at the Little League and whether that's feasible or not. So, I think the best I have to say right now is we're aware there's a problem, we're empathetic to it, but there is no, you know, snap of the finger solution that we're able to take, because just as much as, you know, we very much hear the neighbors, we also hear the concerns and the desires of the league and, you know, we get into this interesting spot where we try to do the best we can to meet them all. There is also a little bit of understanding of, that Matt started to mention of, the city of Grandville is not run the Little League. That's a nonprofit organization, so, you know, we get involved as, you know, the owners of the property, we get involved as, you know, trying to promote good community and trying to be mediators here. So, again, I think that's the realistic role we have to take in the short term and what the longer-term answer is, I would say I think is still to be determined. So, again, if there is more discussion that wants to be had, you know, on this, I would definitely say when we get to the point of having some of those conversations, having some council involvement is gonna be necessary, just like having residents involved, just like having Little League representatives involved is all gonna be part of that conversation. But, again, I'll just, I guess wrap up again, is I at least appreciate seeing that the Little League baseball complex with some parking, I can get it signage and maybe that's not the solution, maybe it's, we need to just reframe it as something about, you know, exploring parking options. I mean, maybe that's just a minor rephrasing out there, maybe that includes signing, maybe that includes other things. But, you know, annual assessments with Little League, I think that's a possible accountability mechanism we could look at building in. So, I think, I think this is good in the sense of it acknowledges that we know there's a problem and that we all wanna work together to try to move that forward and there's no magic answer that I think is gonna solve this.
Yeah, I appreciate all of that. I did wonder if we couldn't maybe just incorporate, I wanna honor the work of the Parks and Rec Board, you know, up to this point, I don't wanna delay this process in order to get it done. But could we, we've mentioned, oh, this is really just a general vision, we don't need specificity on everything, could we embed something that says that that is a goal that we are working at mitigating the parking problems? At least that serves as a north star moving forward for the next five years to say, we are constantly reminded we've gotta work on this. So, I personally would like to see something like that.
Maybe just explore, maybe we change straight parking signage to explore parking solutions or explore, you know, parking options, 'cause I, again, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, you do these applications a lot more than I do. I think signage could be a part of that, if that's still the direction we wanted to go, but I think it would give us a little more wiggle room to include some of these other things that I know the residents have mentioned, have mentioned before.
Yeah. We could say something like, change that sentence to say something like, engage a group of stakeholders to develop solutions around parking in and around the Little League complex or something like that. And if we wanted to add one more clause, we could say something like, starting with enforcement of existing parking regulations, which is what the purpose of the signage thing is, is to say, yeah, you can't park in other people's driveways, you can't block fire hydrants. I mean, this stuff should be obvious, but maybe a reminder, you know, do not park at the entrance to Billmar Street, do not park blocking driveways, something like that. Is it gonna solve the problem? No. But at least we can get rid of maybe the low-hanging fruit of bad behavior and then work on a comprehensive solution from there. And we can, it's just a matter of wording that one sentence to give a little more direction to the conversation. But all the plan, all this document is gonna be able to do is tee up that conversation. We're not gonna be able to solve that with this document. That's gonna have to take, you know, the working together by the various stakeholders to try to accomplish.
The implementation is, and like any of these is gonna be the key. So, again, if there is some language, I think any of these, what I'm hearing is would be maybe an up pivot in the right direction, but I think what we're hearing is it's gonna be actually working to implement those and to act, to put those into action, which is going to be, you know, the direction we need to go. So, I know I'll pull my notes back out and see if I can get a little more intentional about trying to organize that meeting here in the upcoming months. I know that'll take a little bit of time, but, you know, I know that's something that is something that is hopefully productive prior to the spring of the season.
And when we do come up with a plan, whatever that plan may entail, we can also go back and amend this plan, partner our plan within the five years if we do wanna make a grant application out of that.
Any other comments or questions? Lights, is there a motion or votes to vote here? So, sports, motion, support? We started to, but now...
Started to, yeah.
Any others? I see we can call a little...
Help some members, Dean Star?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Norah?
Yes.
And Mira?
Yes. So, the next item would be to take a look at adopting the twenty-twenty-five Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
It would be, and noted it in my memo to all of you that, the way I see it, we really have three options this evening. You can consider approval of the plan as presented, you consider the approval of the plan with any modifications. An example of such would be, you know, based on the conversation we just had. Or if you all feel like there are more significant changes that need to get made, you could conceivably take it with consideration on January twenty-seventh. Just as a friendly reminder again, that would be the last date the council could consider it for us to remain eligible for twenty-twenty-five grants. So, again, my suggestion would be let's try to keep it within those dates, but, you know, if there are modifications that we can make as part of this motion, please just be as specific as you can and we're happy to get those addressed.
Council thoughts?
Well, I guess my personal thought would be, we've received some good feedback here and some different comments about things. We made some revisions just recently, I think there may be a few more revisions to make. You know, I appreciate, Mitch, I appreciate your comments here. There are a number of things in these comments that were, you know, things to go back and look at for typos or corrections or clarifications and things. Personally, I feel like it would be beneficial to give Chris and Paige, you know, another week or two to kind of incorporate some of this additional feedback that we've gotten and then look at like a final draft in a couple of weeks. And we can incorporate comments about the Little League, we can incorporate comments about, you know, the trail system and the disc golf, things like that. I just think there may be a few things here that we could look at and kind of get a final draft to see before we do a final approval. Just my personal thought.
I'm with you.
If that's the direction we decide to go, Chris and Paige, I don't need to put you guys on the spot, you know, with the input we've received... You know, with the input we've received from some of the, the letters as well as tonight, is that something we think we can get incorporated in the next few days so we can at least put that plan out, you know, on the website and share with council further ahead of time in that next meeting? Just in case there's anything else, we're, we're kind of positive we've got a final, final and it can be considered for adoption at that time?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Cole, make a look at that again in two weeks. Time for the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the, the feedback on the plan, we'll, we'll work on that. Moving into the city manager's report, a few other items for your consideration this evening. Going to start with an updated Granville Commons use guidelines document. So just as a little bit of background, in 2022, when the library was recently finished, the city council adopted some policy guidelines to guide reservations and rentals of the community commons space. Since then, I know our team and the library team have learned quite a bit through the experience of implementing that policy. And based on that experience, an updated version of the policy was prepared for you all for consideration. It, it, it really can be highlighted by some clarifications and changing of the operating hours to more accurately coincide with the operating hours of the library. The elimination of the rental fee. That is because what we've learned over the last couple of years is the rental fee was so small that in effect it was creating more issues in administering it than we were actually collecting. So just to put it in perspective, the finance department told me we were bringing in less than $500 a year from that and it was creating an additional piece of handling that money and tracking it down for only really specific situations. And then lastly, there were some just other minor edits from clarity in regard to cancellations and so on and so forth that we feel like the proposed policy just gets us a little bit closer to where we want to be. But Josh from the library is here, again, his team largely is the ones who administer this. So I don't know if you all have any questions or concerns for him or Josh, do you have any comments about this that, that I missed? I know this is something you guys have been thinking out, thinking about from before I, I got here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the majority of it is a lot, a little mini wording changes to get a little clearer and easier to explain what is available in the room, things like adding more information about the AV in the spaces so people know. But the two big ones, we're just changing the, changing the hours. We have very few rentals that start before we open in the morning. And when we do, without fail, people forget to come get the key and then they call me and reach out, you know, whatever, it just doesn't work very well. So we decided not letting people reserve it before library staff are there in the morning. And we did not allow rentals on Sunday. Honestly, I don't really remember the discussion that went into that originally, but we, staff forget that half the time when people, and nobody sees it in the form. So half of the time they've said yes, and then it's a awkward thing when we tell the next person, no, no, these are the rules. So we decided just having it available on Sundays when we are open, which is one to five, but only during the school year would alleviate that. And then the other only significant one was removing the fees largely because, as Griffin said, it's just kind of an administrative nightmare. People always write checks to us at the library and then we have to tell them, sorry, that doesn't work. Then they send one in and just even tracking because it's two different entities kind of sharing this work.
And we only required them for some organizations and not for others. And those organizations were not the ones that were actually using the space very often. So I've seen that in my short time here. It was one of those that, again, I think the intent was really good originally, what we just found out is in practice. It, it, it wasn't necessarily planning out the way you expected.
And you'll note, like, the majority of the fees were for, for profit businesses that wanted to use the room. There were already some specific rules about whether, like, you had to not be selling anything or, you know, conducting business, it was more like internal meeting, you know, yearly staff meeting or whatever, or educational purposes. And so we just decided the easiest way there was to remove that entirely, make it for nonprofit use, but with a caveat that local businesses that want to use it could, if they're members of the chamber, apply through the chamber, which is a nonprofit, and that would give a mechanism for those local businesses to still use it for some of those purposes. So that's pretty much it. Little wording things here or there for weather policy, et cetera. Happy to answer questions.
I think you kind of answered one of my questions. I would like to change for specifically calling out Granville Johnson and chamber members versus just general businesses.
It was our way to still allow local businesses to have an ability to use a space, but at the same time, kind of close that gap between saying for-profit business versus nonprofit businesses. It's not a very common use is my understanding.
No, not a lot.
And again, if anything, what we're, what we're seeing is there's such a high demand for these spaces starting to actually contract down on who's able to use it. It's going to help us manage the facilities for the originally intended kind of community group purposes as opposed to possible others. I mean, that's, it's one of those, I'd like to say it's, it's a good problem to have. Spaces are so fantastic, they're getting used so much, you know, if anything, we just have to start to realize that we want to do the best we can to keep it to the original intended purpose.
Sure.
For what, for what it's worth, just to clarify, I mean, January I think is kind of a light month, but I still went through all of the, the things we had on the calendar for January and there are about a hundred uses of those rooms. Obviously, the majority of it is the library, that's about 55 of them, with another four or five city like the meeting last week or whatever. But that's still another 40 rentals of those spaces or, you know, reservations of those spaces. So it's, it's pretty much busy all day, every day in the most part.
So kind of along with that, Matt's saying the security changes. Eliminating the necessity for residency or whatever, does that give us an opportunity to perhaps do more online reservations versus sending in the long?
It could. I haven't even really looked at that. That'd be kind of a discussion of either using a new reservation system or talk. Right now, we use the same booking system that KBL uses for their, their study rooms. But the way that works, I'm trying to remember because it's been a bit since we looked at it.
Self review and approve that.
Yeah, some of the approvals were the tricky part. I wouldn't mind looking at an, an online system, even if it's not like you can just book it, it might still have to come to us, but that'd be kind of a separate thing to.
I was curious with removing the whole thing about the security deposit, are we, we had any issues with food or would there be masses behind it?
No, so that clause, even short of any of these changes, that clause about the security deposit didn't make any sense because we didn't actually have security deposits. I think very early when we first made the version, we added that clause and then made the decision not to have a security deposit and just didn't take that out. So we've had, it's been used, what, three years now? No real damage anywhere at all, you know, little things like walls get scraped or whatever.
Josh, that was the same question I had asked about that, is like, can we get rid of that being considered a security deposit? For those reasons, we decided not to. And also, as Josh mentioned, it being a community space, we've been very fortunate that people have been taking good care of it. In the case that they don't, we do have some other language about trying to recruit some fees, how reversible that would be, I admit, it's questionable. But there's the other fact that if we had an issue and someone disrespects the space, they just, we, we would have a conversation about not being able to have them reserve the space again. And then, you know, that's happened in another situation.
It's happened with one person who kind of broke a couple of rules a couple of times and would give a couple of warnings and each time there was so, and, and not really damage type stuff. It was things like not letting us know, like booking a lot of times and then not telling us when they're canceling it so nobody else could book it, being excessively noisy, some stuff like that. One or two of their events seemed to be, when we discovered online, it looked like they were charging an entry fee for whatever it was, they were doing some things like that. That's pretty much the only instance, none of it was damage related.
That's great.
Yeah, knock on wood.
Any other questions for Josh? If not, is there a motion to approve the updated Granville Commons use guidelines? So. Support, motion and support. Another discussion? Thanks for working on those. Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Truce?
Yes.
Annoal?
Yes.
Elderlutz?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
Norika?
Yes.
Seemstar?
Yes.
And Merron.
Yes.
Thank you, Josh. Moving on to the next item, we have an updated employee earned sick time policy. So an updated sick time policy is included in your packet. This has been developed with assistance from Varnum to comply with the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act that will be taking effect this February. It requires, among other things, all employees to earn sick time at a minimum rate of one hour per 30 hours worked. The city of Granville's full-time employees already earn more than this, but it will specifically impact some seasonal and part-time employees here. Varnum put together a short memo highlighting a few of the other changes. It, it also really just changed the way we framed and phrased a lot of the things in the policy, which is why you'll see kind of the significant revisions. When it comes to the benefit provided to the two employees, it's really not changing that much. It's just much more how it's framed based on this, this new law. I want to put the other kind of caveat that this is a space that the state continues to talk about. My understanding is there was a, a new law introduced here in the last few days that potentially changed this again. So the intent of bringing this before you all is we waited as long as we could to see what the state was going to do. Ultimately, we're getting pretty close to that deadline, so we need to come into compliance. But I do think there's a good chance that there may be some changes again at the state level that we necessitate some changes here locally at some point in the future. So what you all have before you in, in the packet is a copy of a summary memo from Varnum as well as the proposed policy. And then put on the desk for when you all got here was a copy of the existing policy just in case you wanted to see some changes. It is a pretty substantial change, so doing a red line wasn't going to be real effective. I do know that the city attorney is prepared to answer any questions you all may have. But other than that, it is recommended that council approve this so we can come into compliance with the earned, or the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act.
Any questions for Griffin or for David about the proposed sick time policy?
Uh, no, I just, I think Griffin, City Manager did a great job explaining the policy. It's something that we are required to adopt because before February 21st, when the law goes into effect, it's kind of a unique situation in terms of how this, how this law came into effect. It's effectively a ballot proposal in 2018, which the legislature elected to go ahead and enact and make changes. Then there was litigation regarding the method which that was done and the court said the legislature could not do that. And so reinstated effectively the, the language in the ballot proposal effective in February requires all public and private employers to comply with the language that was in the initial ballot proposal. It's, it's caused a significant amount of uproar in the business community because some of the, some of the policy is sort of unworkable, particularly the part of just being able to call ahead and, and say, I'm not coming in without providing a legal notice, which for, you know, the public safety department or manufacturing business is, is really disruptive. So neither the Democrats nor the Republicans in the legislature are happy with this. And there have been bills introduced by both Democrats and Republicans to modify this law. And we expect that a number of those bills will receive traction. So as, as the city manager said, there are going to be changes coming down the pipe, but for now, this is something we need to enact prior to February 21st.
I had heard that in the past, when policy changes like this were brought before you all, sometimes they would be kind of introduced, you all would consider them, they would be brought back at a later meeting. Where we are at, timing wise, that is possible if you all need more time to consider. But otherwise, for, for something like this, if you all are comfortable, we would just seek a recommendation today. Or, excuse me, we, we would just seek adoption today.
Well, it sounds like something we need to do and it's going to be changed anyway, so.
Probably.
So those observations is our motion to approve the proposed leave policy. For the time being, some of. Support. Motion, support. Other questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Annoal?
Yes.
Elderlutz?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
Norika?
Yes.
Seemstar?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
And Merron.
Thank you all. Moving on to the plan to upgrade the physical security systems. I'm going to have our IT director come in and talk to you all about this in a little bit. Just as a little bit of background, you know, there's a memo in the app details the request to upgrade the organization's physical security systems. Notably, what we're talking about is door access controls, cameras and the related IT infrastructure. Go ahead and have Jason talk you through this and what's something that he and his team and the rest of our team have been working on for some time.
Thanks, Griffin. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, I'll just give us some highlights. I had my memo. The first thing I kind of wanted to talk about is since we started work with you in July of 2022, we've made a lot of changes with your support. Back when we first started talking about this agreement with Ken and Tammy, kind of one of the priorities they had was trying to look towards the future and get these things not only upgraded but maintained. So we're in kind of a situation we had to go through and deal with these significant upgrades. So I kind of wanted to mention that because this is the last big system. Usually when you see me, I'm up here asking for a lot of money. I want to let you know that that's kind of coming to an end with this. In the future, this type of stuff would be budgeted and then part of a, you know, a normal budgeting cycle. So, um, the reason we're, we're kind of coming to you with this is that the system is starting to age. At, when we were going through the system with one of the vendors, he opened up one of the panels. He was like, oh, wow, I haven't seen that in a while. I said, what's going on? He's like, oh, I haven't seen those boards in like three or four years, they all died out a long time ago. So that's one of the reasons why we're kind of coming and asking for the amount of money we are tonight. So, um, with that said, some of the highlights will be up, we need to upgrade the fiber between the buildings and also run fiber over to the library. That'll allow us to be able to have these higher resolution cameras, but also that fiber itself is aging and needs to be updated, so it's kind of a two birds, one stone situation. And then connecting the library to this comp, complex, if you want to call it that, will allow people to use your key cards, not only here but over at the library, and then allow us to set schedules and stuff over there. I know that's one of the, kind of the pain points right now is that system over there, they installed it. Josh tries to maintain it, but it would really be best if we kind of get all that together and they don't kind of have that separate thing over there that's kind of on its own. Part of this, like I said, my memo, it gets in this other parts here, we didn't not, we didn't just want to update it, or I'm sorry, update was there, but also secure other things that were kind of issue or pain points while we were doing this project. So one of those is like here in City Hall, securing the doors by clerks and assessing. So those are key cards like the treasury, adding a lot more cameras across the campus in general. I, I would say we're probably going to three X amount of cameras, especially due to the fact like the library doesn't have any cameras right now, the fire department doesn't have any cameras right now and the DPW doesn't. So that's a part of the reason for the expense of this. And then the key cards themselves, it was actually interesting, one of the vendors, we were walking through there, he's like, you realize anybody can just take one of these key cards to Home Depot and get one made, right? No, I, I didn't realize that. So that's, that's a part of it, is just upgrading it and encrypting all that, getting all that kind of in the 21st century. So, um, so in order to do this project, there's three different parts. So essentially, we have the vendor that'll do the vast majority of the work, which is going through installing the cameras, installing the key card doors, upgrading, so on and so forth. And then there's some kind of backend work on, on top of that. So, um, we got that part. We're, we're recommending a company called People Driven Technology to do that. We got quotes from three companies. You know, we did a lot of due diligence to staff on this because it is a lot of money. I, like most groups, so then local government, they have assessing groups, there's clerks for IT. I know most of the other IT directors in the area and I asked them for input, you know, what are you seeing as well? Between experience up in Walker, because we did this master project not too long ago, and what other people are saying, People Driven Technology was the recommended one from not only us but other municipalities in the area, and they were the lowest of three. So it kind of worked out both ways there. So on that part of it, we're recommending the. People Driven Technology quote. For the fiber, we're recommending a company called Shareco Communications. I've worked with them extensively. They've done fiber work for us up in Walker. They do, they have done local pitch work for you guys here. They got a great set of people there. We're asking up to forty thousand dollars for that work. And then, lastly, there's just some network equipment that has to go in to be able to, you know, be able to handle the cameras and stuff like that. The labor for that and with the project management, all the stuff that happened, happened on the IT side. That's all included with your agreement with Walker, so none of that obviously is in here. Just needed the hardware there. So, the total costs come up to, there's five hundred and five thousand for the physical security contractor, there's forty thousand for the fiber, and there's just under twenty for the network equipment. That's a total of five hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and four one dollars and three cents. So, Jane and Griffin could better speak to this, but essentially, we're not saying that if you prove this tonight, we're going to spend half a million dollars tomorrow. There was money already in this budget year for some of this, around a hundred and seventy thousand, if I remember. That'll get us started, and then we would budget in the next coming years the rest of the money, if that makes sense.
So, if I can hit on that just a little bit more and summarize a few of that. So, my understanding is that, you know, our organization fell a little bit behind when it came to maintaining some of these systems. As Jason mentioned, we've taken kind of a phased approach, getting those up to date, so that they, one, are up to date, and two, can be maintained more appropriately moving forward. Systems such as the citywide phone system, systems such as our computers, and now we're talking about, you know, these physical security. You know, as the city manager, securing our people and our property is going to be one of our highest priorities, just in terms of not only taking care of what we're entrusted to take care of, but also making sure we're setting ourselves up to be successful moving forward. So, you know, I'll be the first to admit, when I saw the price tag from Jason, like, this is definitely one, I think that pulls you back a little bit, but when you then start thinking about what it is we need to do, you start to realize this really is a necessity for our organization. So, when it comes to the plan to implement that and actually put that into place, as Jason mentioned, between the general fund and the sewer fund, there was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars included in this fiscal year's budget. So, what we are ultimately looking for is authorization to move forward with this project as proposed. We would kick that off this fiscal year with that a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We're not going to need, you know, a budget amendment for this year. That's going to be enough to start with getting some of the equipment ordered, as well as start with some of the backend infrastructure. What we would do is, in this budget process that we're just getting started, we would build in the rest of the cost, and that would then get brought to you all, obviously, with consideration for the upcoming budget. But what we're looking for right now is really just any questions you all have. Does this project make sense? Do we understand why it's needed? Where we would go then is, if you're comfortable this evening, we would be looking for a vote. If not, we're happy to have additional conversations and bring this back on the twenty-seventh. I will also just point out, the city attorney and I had a little bit of a conversation leading up to this meeting. We do see a few things in terms of the contract with the vendor that's recommended, that we would want to get cleaned up. So, whether it's this evening or at a future meeting, we do think we'd like to see the motion include a condition that the city attorney and the city manager will work with the vendor, just to clean up some of the language in the contract, to make sure we're protected.
So, really, you're looking for approval on three contracts, one with the bulk of it, and one with Shareco, and then the other one with like the twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think it could probably be done, you know, as one motion, since reviewing this as kind of one big project, but it would be good, I think, to reference the three different vendors.
Yeah, and I think it would include, the motion would include, again, working with the vendor on an implementation schedule, the hood of spending in this fiscal year to the amounts that are allocated for this fiscal year, as well as kind of general contract review. A few things that are, you know, for example, in the vendor's contract, there's a confidentiality provision, which we have to take out due to FOIA, no immediate concerns. There's the need to incorporate some typical city insurance requirements and things of that nature, making sure there's any interference with operations in hall or library, some kind of typical contract considerations that we would want to incorporate.
We'll also tell you all, just for whatever it's worth, Jason and the team spent a lot of time. So, every time we got a quote to make sure it was as accurate as possible, they would spend half the day on-site, walking through all of our facilities. So, I can tell you that there was a lot of due diligence in terms of spending time with these vendors to make sure we were getting as accurate a quotes as possible, because I think we've learned for some projects, we don't want any surprises down the way. This is a big enough investment as it is, but I'm pretty confident that we've got, you know, kind of accurate numbers here.
Counsel, comfortable moving forward tonight?
Yeah, Josh.
It's just a question. So, as I say, as a big investment, it seems pretty important in overdue, it sounds like. I'm curious if putting this in place and upgrading these security features, if that's going to be something that would work for us down the road as far as insurance costs, or, you know, if we can show providing higher levels of security, protect our assets and our people, is that potentially helpful for reducing some of the insurance costs?
Actually, I can't speak to that.
That's a conversation we can have with the insurance carrier. It's not one we've had to date. So, I don't have a great answer for you, other than, you know, if we move forward with this, that's a conversation we're happy to have when we get to kind of our assessment and our review this for the future. I think it was a great.
I'd say it's a great point. I didn't think about that before, so.
I didn't know if that was typical, that you would see some savings there.
We didn't, when we did all this at Walker, we didn't do that with them at Mel, but I mean, that's a great point. I'm actually going to bring that up there now, too, because that's a good, that's a good idea, so.
And I think the other thing that just, you know, for the sake of us having this conversation and all of us kind of learning together, you know, like any IT system, the computers, the phone system, you know, we're going to spend this money. It's not then a set-it-and-leave-it, it's something we're never going to have to touch again. But there are some additional costs with this time because we're playing some catch-up. So, with a lot of things, there's going to be costs this time tangibly, the fiber installation and some of the backend work that we've fallen behind on. So, in the future, when we have to continue to maintain these systems, yes, there'll be things we have to do, but not at this scale.
No other comments?
Yeah, math checks out that, you know, our budget amount for this is about thirty percent of the total project, which leaves seventy percent, which is a pretty big chunk as we move into a budget planning season. I guess I would just try to be cautious with that, with that number, knowing the importance of this, but then also just the amount of expense we're going to have compared to what we budgeted this year, or maybe what we budgeted in the previous cycle or prior. So, you know, that will rely on all departments to be conscientious, which we're always a great job at being the steward of our dollars. But I just want to say that out loud, because that's, this is a big one.
Yes, this, absolutely.
But it's also very important.
Is there a motion to move forward with this project, specifically entering into a contract subject to city attorney's review and approval with People Driven Technology, with fiber or Shareco Communications, and with CDW-G?
Yeah.
That's for network equipment, as outlined in Jason's January thirteenth memo. And also subject to a budget. Is there such a motion?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Support.
Marcy's got that, right?
I don't know.
Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilor Del Brilis?
Yes.
Mary Hough?
Yes.
Norhuck?
Yes.
Seestra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
And Mary Moss?
Yes.
Thank you all for your continued support. Appreciate it.
Moving on to the next item, trying to be respectful of everyone's time, we do have board commission appointments for twenty-twenty-five. This item, there was some consensus to wait to make any appointments in December until we both had a full council present, as well as to give some additional time for individuals to submit any applications. My understanding is we only received one new application from Carolyn Frederick for the Grounds of Fuel Redevelopment Authority. Otherwise, the summary sheet in your packet should be almost exactly the same as that brought to you all in December. Happy to work through that with you, kind of board by board, or however you all would like to proceed.
Notice how would you like to proceed, board by board, or just kind of a blanket approval? There's recommendations or referrals that recommendations will become later, so. Would you want it with them or all together? I had a motion that we approved all of those with the board recommendation as one large motion. Motion?
Support.
Support. Motion and support. And you'll see, and there is going to be, it's with a redding indicating that there's going to be recommendations coming after.
The Grounds of Fuel Board will consider it at their upcoming meeting.
And Tree Board.
The Tree Board as well. And then, the only other one I would note is, there's quite a few applications from the Park and Recreation Board. I'd suggest that we also send those names to the Parks Board, and we can get a recommendation from them. I know the city appointment and the school appointment would be reappointments. Really, you guys do the city one, but the board gets to choose that other one anyway, but we can forward those applications on to them. Josh, am I right there?
Yes, I was going to mention that, too. So, if you don't recall, the Park and Recreation is kind of unique, and then we have city appointees, we have school board appointees, and we have appointees kind of from within the board itself. And so, the city appointee recommendation is for Ben, who's been the city appointee for fifty years, one of them. And then, there's a vacancy, which was Tim Anner, and Tim was actually a board appointee, so we would take these back to our group and perhaps do interviews or look at these applications and then make that recommendation report.
So, would that change whoever made the motion and support?
Yeah.
So, all we need are two then, tonight, for the sounding appeals and construction bar?
Yes, that would be my understanding.
Okay. There's three or three people, I think, who have applied for pretty much every board. I don't know anyone, so I, other than kind of grossing their applications, I really don't have a recommendation, other than, Carolyn, did you apply for one of them?
The Grounds of Fuel Development.
That'd be great. Erin, did you apply for any extras?
No.
Would you be willing to serve on any?
Depends on which one.
Got a motion and support? Any other comments, questions? Now, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilor Mary Hough?
Yes.
Norhuck?
Yes.
Seestra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Governor Moss?
Yes.
So, we could still have one vacancy on the ZDA, but we did just reappoint two alternates, so that board will be able to function while, you know, we figure out who we want to put on there. The Construction Board of Appeals, I'll also share, you know, that's a board that it meets so rarely, that leaving that one vacant practically isn't going to cause a hardship for anyone right now, if you all want to take some more time to figure out who you think would be the appropriate individual there. I will note, the Construction Board of Appeals is kind of a unique one in the sense of by state statute, they are required to have, they are required to have some tie to the construction industry, trades, engineering, and they don't have to be a resident. So, that's just kind of a unique one, but otherwise, I think we're able to move forward. If there are no other kind of conversation there, I don't mean to rush you, but I do have a few other kind of updates or announcements I want to share for the good of the group. First of all, just looking ahead a little bit to the meeting on the twenty-seventh, other than some of the items we talked about this evening, we are anticipating the class and compensation study to be presented to you all at that time. It's not that meeting, it may be one after that, but that's coming here in the next few meetings. We also will, you all will be asked to go into closed session on the twenty-seventh for a variety of topics. One of them would be the city manager's six-month review. That was something you all put in my contract when I was hired, so I'll kind of let you all defer to the mayor on how you all would like to handle that, but just as a heads up, because we're going to be going in for some other items, we'll look at doing that at that meeting as well. Included in the packet is also a draft of the budget process timeline for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six of budget. Appreciate the help of the treasurer, Jane, and the rest of our team in kind of getting that prepared. I know there's a lot of work ahead of us, but just wanted to make sure you all have that calendar. If there's any discussion you all would like to have on that, feel free and reach out to me. I'd be happy to do that. Specifically, please note kind of the workshop dates, just in case those don't work. Please let me know sooner rather than later, so we can take a look there. But otherwise, it's a very kind of consistent schedule to what I think you all have been used to in the past handful of years. Two other things I want to share this evening. One is that the Plan Commission approved a site plan to demo the parking deck at the mall. It's starting to get picked up by the news. I know many of you, we've already talked about it, but just making sure you all are kind of in the loop on the progress being made with Pogue as the new mall ownership. They got a site plan approved, my understanding is they're looking to move forward with that project as early as the spring to get that, the parking deck on the north side, so the Rivertown Crossing side of the mall demoed. The site plan has them redoing some of the parking areas, as well as preparing a potential lot or two for development, kind of on the north side there. So, stay tuned, and if you like more information about that, we're happy to provide it. And then, lastly, just want to make you all aware that we're continuing to have some exciting conversations with Moxy Development, which is a development group that's done a number of projects in the Grand Rapids area. They are in discussions with the DDA Board about potentially acquiring a DDA-owned parking lot at thirty-sixty-six Fayette. They have some concept plans to build a mixed-use multifamily building there, which my understanding would be some of the first new construction in the downtown in several years. So, kind of an exciting project that we're working through with both the development team and the DDA Board, anticipated to have a draft development agreement for the DDA to consider in February. So, it's another one that I'm excited about and seems to meet a lot of the goals that both the DDA and the council have had for the downtown. But if you all would like to discuss that more, get any more information, please reach out to me. I'm happy to discuss more. I think that's all I have for this evening. I appreciate you guys getting through all these items. It was a pretty full agenda, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you all may have.
Great, thanks. Councilor, any other comments? Randy?
I guess I just want to thank everybody who came out and made comments about the project rec plan. I thought they all stated very well. I thought they were all very, stated very well. It was just very thought provoking, I think, to us, and it gives us the opportunity to think through a little bit more of what we're doing, give us some guidance, uh the council, the park board, you two gentlemen, and thank you for your service on board. And uh it's always good to hear that many people with various opinions come and speak just so often. We'll have a public hearing, there's no way here, so says a lot for these people. Just like, thank you guys for showing up.
Josh? I would do those, we'll repeat it. Um just want to say thanks to everybody for the uh time a couple of weeks, last week, last week about the strategic planning. So I thought that was a very good session, very productive. It's amazing how quickly three hours goes past. Um sorry you couldn't be there, Steve, but I'm looking forward to seeing how your input fits in with the voting on some of the different items there too. Looking forward to seeing kind of the final, you know, strategic plan, but I know it was good. So thank you for initiating that and everybody's effort this period.
All right, um I also was going to thank the Parking Rec Board for all of their work on the master plan um and as well um to all of the public comments. It's a great thing when we have so many people invested and wanting to share their perspective. And like Randy shared, that really helps guide us and make better decisions, so thank you for all of you. Um I will not be here for the next meeting on the twenty-seventh because I have a commitment for work. I'll be at a conference, so I request my excusal. I also caught, as uh Griffin was sharing out about the closed session there, if there's anything I can do to help or to provide feedback ahead of that closed session, I'm happy to do so, and I trust all of you um obviously to act with less interest in the residents. So I have no concerns about that, but I'm happy to provide any feedback needed ahead of that meeting. And then I just wanted to conclude by saying I appreciated Marcy's reminder in our packet um about filing for reelection. But um as I had stated before, I will not be filing for reelection. So I want to encourage any resident who may be interested in um running for city council. There'll be at least one vacancy here. Your last name does not need to, all between M and S, but it's even better to S because nothing has to be searched up here. I am very happy to meet with any resident who may have interest um and share um really the joy that you get from serving in this capacity. Um as I said in a post on social media, um I do not think anyone would find a better council, a better staff, and a better group of committed residents than we have here in Granville. So to be honest, you get more from this position than you will ever give. And so if you are in the business of serving um your community, this is a great spot to be. If anybody to, of wanting to, to have interest. Those are my comments, and my Vikings are not doing so well, I hear, but I know.
I just want to say thanks uh for a great meeting planned tonight. Uh Jason, uh or Josh, Jason and Brent. You know, a sign of a good organization is always looking at where we are and where we can be. And uh you know, just some of the things we dealt with tonight are going to better Granville, our city, and you know, that's really, that's really great. Um so thank you. And um thanks too for our meeting last week. You know, we've done long-range planning, uh strategic planning before, but bringing Al and Jesse in uh to kind of lead us, and um I think we've covered a heck of a lot more than we typically have in my previous years. So I'm excited about working on some of those things too, so uh thanks, everyone.
Um I have nothing more to add. I agree with everything that's been said. Thanks. Yeah, you know, Griffin, as you said in your memo, full agenda, we had a full council, we had a full house. That was great. Energy was, was alive here. Most department heads are here, if not all. I wasn't going to scan them too much, but that's great, great conversation. Um a couple of uh observations, a week ago, we, district huge planning, we talked about some, some uh things we were looking forward to, we ranked some things, and just a week later, we're approving a half million bucks for uh security, so. I mean, that's like, that's like, that's quick, right?
Some of this has passed in any question.
Um you know, and the second observation was somebody else will mention that there has to be much media coverage, coverage for things in Granville, and while that may be a good thing because we're low drama, uh again, I got a call today from somebody at Crane's referencing the project that the Plan Commission approved. So uh if you are wishing for media coverage, be careful what we're wishing for uh in media coverage. But I think that was a good thing, so. Um otherwise, great comments. Uh thanks for being here and welcome back, everybody. Happy to hear.
Yeah, thanks uh to everybody on the Park and Rec Board for your hard work and doing that master plan. Appreciate your service and for everybody who commented on it too. And thanks to the council for making the commitment that we're going to spend our hard of dollars on parks and recreation type things, because those are the things that every resident, no matter age or anything, you're able to enjoy the city parks, so. Also, uh Josh and I were at Riven Cutting last week, and done one of those for a while. It was an Egyptian shawarma restaurant, and that was really good. It's um. Asma, Asma. Anyway, it was, it was great and fun again to do ribbon cutting, so. And that is over in the Bucktown area, so. And between Chipotle and Five Guys, in that building, you got a lot of different food choices. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? So move some, motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. I'm ready.